Hey Chris, you're first up, it appears.
Yes, thank you. Last week I brought, excuse me, brought this up to the council about adding an assistant.
Nine one one director, this has never been more important than what was for last month. Wonder if I can step right into that position. It's not really adding a position, it's hold somebody from the ranks. From the nine one one, we already did this back as already. Um, as far as pay.
It depends on who we would hire or hold from the ranks.
Dale has.
Assistant or sergeants in place.
Road of course had assistants in place.
You know, this assists with with the responsibilities, the duties, responsibilities of the nine one one director. It takes some to heat off them.
I don't know if it'll be a person or a day person, it depends if he gets a position.
They can obviously alternate between those positions to do their.
It's anywhere between three percent, six percent. Seven.
Percent raise, I'm not sure yet, depends on the council, you guys, whatever you decide to do. If you decide to go to that position. Um, and like I said, it's extremely important, um, there's a lot of pressure.
On the nine one one director.
I think this would be something, you know, you have mapping calls. There's just numerous amount of duties that nine one one director does. And I think it's something that should be put in place, should have been placed a while, here in place a while. I'm asking for it now to help the nine one one director.
So isn't this actually a new position? Is there certainly a different job description than what you had whoever moves up?
They would be, they still would run the radio. It would, well, the nine one one director, they still run the radio also, they fell in. They would still do their duties, but while they're sitting there, they could have their responsibilities and duties do that. It'll assist with responsibilities of the nine one one director. Yeah, it wouldn't take the position away from run the radio, not at all. They're still going to run the radio or run dispatch, yes.
But I mean, isn't there a new job description for this?
It's the same, it's just assist the duties of the nine one one director is is what it would be. Same description as that, and we can send out to you if you want to. Actually, we pulled it up last week when I gave it to the council or told the council we were considering that.
Hey, Sheila.
It's just you have to add a form on the matrix.
Yes.
So they're depending on these parts.
And we've done that, we can forward, I can have Sergeant Rogers forward that on too, if you like. And it depends on which dispatcher gets it, if they've got two years' experience or twenty years' experience, where they're going to fall in that matrix. As you know, it goes zero to three, well, I hate to say what would, different increments, whatever percentage they would be.
We would need any motion to approve this position? Basically has been approved by the council?
No.
No?
I didn't bring, I talked about it at the, actually Sheila brought it up to me and I talked about it at the public comment. They'll vote on it, I hope, next Monday. I'm going to be on the agenda next Monday. Um, they, we just discussed it, they couldn't take a vote on it because it wasn't on the agenda for the last meeting. It'll be on the agenda for next Monday. I, I've got a good reception for, I mean, I, I've got good backing for it, I believe, yes.
Oh, one last question, maybe one last, um. If you're moving somebody up, is that person then going to be replaced as well? Are we adding another person to total staff? Total staff stays the same.
No, stays the same, the staff stays the same, it just added responsibilities for them, that's the reason for the pay raise, yes.
Any other questions for Chris on this nine eleven assistant? Needed in the form of a motion. I'd make that motion to, uh, approve a nine one one assistant.
Okay, I'll second it.
Another discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye, thank you, you're welcome.
Gary.
Yeah, I have it in front of you there, the, got another quote for generator. You guys can look them over and decide which one, I know Smalls, uh, their price is installed. Smalls have everything in the county other than the justice center. They, what? Oh, maintenance.
Gary.
Larry's work on everything other than, they might work on it, but the one at the justice center has not been Smalls' degree. I did, we had talked about the funding for purchase from. Have to buy it, buy it, I guess.
I think we discussed some too, since it is, this facility here is used as a shelter, emergency preparedness kind of thing on occasion. That's why we thought maybe at least part of it didn't come under the ARPA funding.
That would be greatly appreciated for me and the highway for my budget. Split it half, I, that would be great. That's you guys' decision.
Your recommendation here, Gary?
My recommendation would be go with Smalls, because his, the other two is not installed price. Smalls is installed.
And he's close.
Well, and he's been doing other business in the counties.
Uh, cheaper?
Yeah, and he's cheaper. It's a good brand, uh, that's, that's what I would do, and Larry kind of, him and I had talked and said, yeah, it's done good work with the county.
Okay. And is this a firm price of forty-nine?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So we'd need a motion to approve the, uh, small maintenance and electric LLC to install this generator. And also include, uh, the, uh, ARPA, ARPA funds would, uh, split the cost in half with the county highway.
Fine.
I have to make that motion.
Okay, I'll second the motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the only other thing was our work hours, we are extending them two weeks, uh, in September. Start five eighths on, actually would be September sixteenth, is the Monday, the pay period is September.
Good. And Gary, when we talked about that, part of that was, couldn't get the work done because of the rainy season and.
Well, and we're mowing, started mowing, they, that ten hours makes a big difference.
All right.
Quite a few complaints about mowing.
Yes, we have, uh.
Well, the more main makes more to mow, some August we wouldn't have mowed a second time.
Well.
But your corn wouldn't have grown.
This last rain was a help.
Yeah.
Anything else?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks Gary.
Nathan? Good morning, um, so all I've got for you this morning are some courthouse updates. I'm going to go in a little bit different order than I have the last couple of weeks, uh, starting with finances. The balances I've reported the last couple of meetings have been inaccurate, I have realized, because I had not been receiving account statements and thus didn't, had not been including interest in those totals. As of right now, accounting for all change orders that we have approved to date, we have a contingency balance of four hundred and fifty-six thousand thirteen dollars and nine cents, about thirty-five thousand dollars more than I had reported. Uh, the tranche held directly by First National currently totals one million seven hundred fifty-six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars and twenty cents, two hundred and fifty-four dollars and twenty cents, which is forty-three thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and ninety-one cents greater than I last reported. As I noted last week, I expect the next disbursement to be much smaller than the most recent one because of both lower luminot billing and the way ton and blank draw schedule aligns with work performed. Any questions on the finances? Uh, moving on to change orders, I do not have any today, but wanted to update you on recent and forthcoming requests. I had previously warned that a request would likely be coming down the pipeline, pun intended, to exist a situation where a sewer line shown on older drawings doesn't actually exist. I had feared it would come at a substantial cost, but I was able to sign off on it at a value of twelve thousand eighty dollars and forty-six, forty-six cents, a total that will decrease to seven thousand seven hundred eight dollars and forty-eight cents if the subcontractor does not have to install a conflict structure under Meridian Street. On Friday, I signed off on one relating to exterior electrical components that returned about twenty-six hundred dollars to the contingency line item. There is one request I approved for a TBD time and materials cost to address a corroded beam uh, under the old storefront on the main level west entry, but that work has not really moved forward yet. There are four requests still under review, and I am hoping that project manager Matt Nachovich will have a report on me, on these to me shortly, so I've got a sense of the full picture to date.
What beam, is that like a floor, floor support?
Yeah, and John might be able to touch on that in a minute when he, in a little more detail, but yeah. Um, we expect a change to the plans that will likely cost between roughly twenty-two thousand and thirty-three thousand for both redesign work and the actual change order requests. I believe that I've previously reported on the problems that arose when carpenters discovered a structural beam at the base of the wall between the courtroom and the jury room when they removed the wainscoting, an obstacle that makes installing an ADA compliant restroom doorway impossible. Uh, ton and blank, luminot, and I have spent a substantial amount of time considering options for overcoming this hurdle. On Friday, Commissioner Lamer, Counselor Hazimi, and Treasurer Bryant, all members of our steering committee, joined me in the space and reached a consensus on how to proceed. I'm still awaiting feedback from the rest of the committee before we commit to this, but we have tentatively agreed upon a solution that seems to be the least bad option among imperfect alternatives. Uh, we're also reviewing some changes to the electrical scope that will likely add some costs, but ton and blank has been pushing relentlessly to limit the overall impact of this change. Any questions on these recent forthcoming and up in the air change order possibilities?
All right, just, just a comment on that change order. It, it, uh, will make that much more user friendly, uh, on going around through the hallway for the restrooms. So that's our goal, is to be a much more user friendly facility and then allow more room in the mission or meeting room.
So, so what Maurice has explained here is, in the adopted plans for the project, you go into the courtroom where the jury box previously was, was going to be walled off into a small room where the live stream equipment behind you, the laptop that I have here, all of this sort of stuff would be tucked away. It could be an auxiliary meeting room for very small meetings, storage, that sort of thing. And then it, to the other side of the entrance in the southeast corner, we were going to build the women's restroom, uh, because it stacks over the restrooms on the lower and main level so that we could reduce plumbing costs by having it stacked and create a little more symmetry in that space. The pri, the primary downside to that was that it reduced the maximum of allowable seating in the meeting room, but it addressed some necessary things we had to cover in the plans. That, that beam, uh, i- if you ever remember, there are two doors out of the courtroom on that east side, one into the jury room towards the north, one further south, and it was a weird, there was a weird step up. Nobody really knew why, it turns out because they built it later over that beam. That is approximately where the restroom door was going to go off of a new corridor created over there with the men's room on the exterior wall on the other side of that corridor. The consensus we have tentatively reached, and I've spoken to both the surveyor and building inspector whose departments would be impacted a little bit by this, is that the break room we were planning to convert the block with the jury room into will no longer exist. The jury room will be split into two spaces, a smaller one in the northeast corner that will basically be the best naturally lit small room for live stream technology the world's ever seen. And then the women's room will take up that space, the men's room will stay the same, the corridor will basically stay the same. We lose that break room, but we're able to avoid the conflict with the ADA, and we eliminate both the restroom and the tech room in the meeting room, which will allow a larger seating capacity for meetings with larger turnout. So like I said, there's no perfect solution with that steel beam there, but we think that this is the best compromise between cost maximizing the use of the meeting room and making sure that we're able to have an ADA compliant restroom. Which leads me into my final part of my report, uh, project progress. I don't have a lot to report beyond what I reported last week, more demolition, HVAC, plumbing, masonry work, plus some prep work on the roof. Superintendent John Allen will join me here at the table, and I'll let him share his insights on progress and field any questions y'all may have.
Um, so I guess we'll start on the outside, um, the scaffold's going up to go across the roof so we can surround the tower so that some of the masonry can go on around the bell tower and the clock tower. Um, the roofers are on site, they're going to be, they opened the roof up so that the scaffold can land on the roof. Um, and then from there, they're going to go ahead and start their exterior repairs to the roof itself and to some of the existing metals and integral gutter. Um, inside the building, um, I think we're about eighty-five to ninety percent done with our demolition. Um, the last major place we have to do any demolition is in the attic, um, which we're waiting for the bats to be removed or finished removed and the cleanup to take place for that, and then, uh, be able to kind of wrap up the balance of our demolition. Um, we do have the rest of the slab to take out of the basement, I think we have about, I don't know, two hundred square feet left to pull out of the basement. Um, but the earthwork contractor that's going to do the stone and the grading, uh, for the new slab in the basement, they should be on site Tuesday, Wednesday this week. Um, and then we'll be able to start looking at getting concrete poured back in there. The MEPs that were in the basement, uh, the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, um, a lot of that stuff, anything underground is already complete, um, and then the overhead, uh, rough ends are starting to go in. Um, anywhere that we didn't need, uh, wall framing, which is kind of contingent upon the slab being in place in the basement, to get started with that, um, where they're getting, uh, what they can in place, um. We, they started putting the lintels, we had several large areas of the, uh, there was masonry walls that go basically from the foundation all the way up to the roof. Um, so we have started cutting those apart, um, shoring them up, and they started putting the lintels in. That way the final openings are in place. Uh, the basement ones should be done this week, and then, uh, they're going to use the second or the first and second floor, uh, locations for those lintels as rain days so that the masons don't just, you know, miss a day of no work, uh, while they're doing the tuck pointing and restoration work on the outside of the building. Um, they should, uh, they're supposed to bring a second crew on once the scaffold is in place, and they'll have one crew up on the scaffold doing the bell tower work, and then they'll have another crew that's going to get started doing the, uh, physical, like, face walls around the building.
Um, that sewer line under the road possibly, what, what does that entail?
So, um, they had the sewer line exiting the building in, um, what's that ball, that was, uh. Yeah, they, they showed the sewage line coming out of that, and there was no, no line there. Um, the other two locations that it exited the building, or one location, it was, uh, broke off just a few feet outside the building, so it was still, there was still sewage leaving the building in that location, but it just wasn't draining correctly, um, so we didn't find that to be a viable option to reuse. And then the other location was further away, um, so they basically have to add like eighty feet of pipe or sixty feet of pipe, something like that, but they have to go across the road to do it, to hook into one of the existing structures. Um, the concern is that there's a stormwater that goes east and west on the road, and where those two meet, those pipes may be in conflict. So if, if the elevations aren't correct, that's where the conflict structure would need to be. Um, but, you know, if they can get just a slight bit of fallout of it, bypass under it, you know, then we may not need that structure.
So, excuse me, John, when will the acid washing begin on the exterior? Or is it like an acid power washing?
Yeah, so they, uh, the architects listed like seven different cleaning products, so it's not just like a acid wash how we would typically think of like new brick construction. Um, because of the historical nature of the stone that's there, they went with a little bit milder products. So what will happen is you'll see them, they'll start, I think they're going to start on the east side of the building, and they're going to grind out all the, uh, existing mortar, and then they're going to re-tuck point it, and they'll go around the whole building and do that, and then they'll come back around and start washing the whole building. And that gives the initial mortar that they put in time to dry and cure, uh, before they apply anything to it. So, um, the test spots that they have done, the stone really has not changed any color. Like it's, the masons were surprised at how clean the building actually is for given its age, um, and not knowing what has been done to it in the past.
Anything else for John or Nathan?
Um, wh- when will you start, uh, ordering materials? And does it look like there's any supply chain issues, uh, for ordering materials?
Um, currently, the only things that I know that are, uh, potentially long lead times is like the lighting package, because some of that's still being discussed. Um, there was some illumination issues with, uh, what was originally, uh, chosen to go in there. Um, they don't feel like there's enough lumens per light to give adequate lighting in the building in, in some of the hallways specifically. Um, so they're looking at changing that light fixture, um, so that might be a, a lead time item, but I think by the time we get there, I still feel like we're early enough, I don't know that it's going to be an issue. But the other things like the generators on order that should be in plenty of time, they already have all the HVAC equipment, so that, those are generally long lead time items. Um, doors and hardware, I saw that the submittals came through for those, and I think they're all approved now, so they should be able to get those on order. Doors are one of those things that can be a weird order time, but because they're going to come raw and the, uh, painters are going to finish them to match on site, um, we shouldn't have IAS along the lead time to get a raw slab as you do a pre-finished slab.
And, and John, now that you're into this, what are you seeing with the overall integrity of the structure? Uh, does it look like we're going to be able to get another hundred plus years out of this building?
I would think so, that it, you know, it's all masonry construction, so, you know, unless you had some catastrophic failure of the masonry, um, you know, the building's going to stand for, for a long time. Um, you know, some of the walls in there, they're twenty-five inches thick, like, I mean, that's a lot of stone, you know, and they, it goes all the way to the, to the ground, you know, and, uh, underneath the actual brick is all limestone, so you got, you know, stone sitting on stone basically, and, uh, it's, uh, everything I've seen is, seemed to be in pretty decent shape, um.
Excellent.
Whether John's the person to ask or not, but away from the remodel, um, our roofing issues? With, uh, Firestone?
So our roofers came out, um, last week, Monday, Tuesday, I believe they were here, um, doing the Firestone repair, and then the, uh, week before that, they did the jail and, and those, uh. So that's what's, you know, we're just abiding by what Firestone is telling us to, how to fix it up at this point, um. We'll wait for them, you know, they're having a nationwide problem with this. Uh, we don't want you guys to think this is an isolated issue just to your, your roofs, uh, that ton and blank installed, but, uh, we're trying to mitigate it as best we can for all of our clients.
This is basically a patchwork job until they decide whether or not it needs to be replaced.
They're saying this is the solution, so, you know, eh, they pay for the, all the material to put it on there, and, you know, they're saying that if this is our, you know, engineered repair for big situations, then, you know, go ahead and do it. Um, so until they tell us, you know, if they come back and say, no, you know, they may give us another repair, but at this point, Firestone is standing behind their next, their next repair today.
Anything else? Thank you, John.
Yeah, thanks, John. Let me know, uh, if I need to come back or when you guys want to hear more, or stop by and we'll take a walk, so. Thanks so much.
Yep, thanks, John.
Anything else, Nathan?
I'm good.
I, I guess I did want to acknowledge that it is our faithful reporter's birthday today while she is here with us.
Happy birthday, Megan.
Okay, and our other business, we have the approval of the claims and payroll number seventeen.
Okay, I've reviewed the claims, uh, and payroll seventeen, and I make a motion to approve as presented.
Moved and seconded, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we have the minutes for our last meeting, it was on August fifth.
Uh, I have reviewed those minutes, and I make a motion to approve as written.
Moved and seconded, any other discussion on the minutes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Then, uh, didn't think I have any paperwork on this, but we have the conference request from Holly, Benderay plus one deputy to attend the AIC annual conference. That'll be held in, uh, on September twenty-third.
Okay, I.
What is this, nine twenty-three?
Through nine twenty-six.
Six.
Yeah, looks like, uh, well, I make a motion to approve the requests for the conferences.
Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Our discussion, we have a, uh, Cardinal Office Products Lease Agreement. This is one year, I'll be Laura. Five-year agreement. Should turn it off. Just go ahead.
Okay, so the sheriff's department called me a couple weeks ago and complained about two copiers, well, one copier in the office that was a holdover from advanced imaging that was actually a buyout copier at the time that we owned Cardinal. So they didn't have owner and what they needed for that. So I called Cardinal and asked them to come in. Sheriff's Department actually has two of these copier printers. And so Mike Smith, who owns Cardinal Copier, wanted to make a proposal to you. This is not something that needs to be decided on today, but considered, and I think a decision needs to be made by the end of the year. So he, so we have five copier printers on lease with Cardinal that expires in August of twenty twenty-five. He's proposing to shorten that lease period to January of twenty twenty-five, give us, I think, five new copier printers and allowing us to keep two of the old ones. One of the old ones is the one I'm just, um, just so you know, mine, I can't speak for everybody else, but mine is running fine. So it's kind of up to you whether you want to go with this proposal or hold out until August of, let the next administration decide in August, five, lease run out. But I wanted to give you this option. Uh, he was one of, his, actually, it was his father who owned it, and then I'm not sure how, how things transpired. Father retired, one of the kids took it over, and he went to Cardinal, built his Cardinal copier business. So, part of it. Pardon? Well, and Mike's very good, I've all, I've been happy with it so far, I haven't heard any complaints from any other departments. I doesn't have them, I've not heard about them. So that's, that's the story on the Cardinal thing, set up and claim it for me. Mike, that's fine, um, just let me know what you want to do. I also wanted to make a comment. I got a phone call last week from a taxpayer who complained about the quotes coming in that we're approving because he felt that the quotes, at least one quote should come from the county itself, and most of the quotes were coming from outside the county, and he was upset. County, when, when appropriate, it should stay within the county for making purchases, especially when it's a purchase. So I just wanted to share that. That's in his quote, he was going to take these out of there, he said that those two printer copiers are becoming old and hard to get replacement. That's in his quote. He was going to take these out of there. He said that those two printer copiers are becoming old and hard to get replacement parts. And so he was going to replace those two, give us two of what we currently have under his lease that expires in August. And then the total of it would cost, it would add a hundred dollars to the cost of the lease. So. Sorry. Yeah. So right now we're paying a thousand thirty-five dollars per month for this portion of the lease. And if you decide to go with his proposal, it's going to add a hundred dollars. It would be eleven hundred seventy-five per month.
Any comments?
Is there anybody in the community that's getting that? Supply out here?
Out. Um, he doesn't, I am. But not like Cardinal supplies them. And they've always been good when they call them. They're. About addressing immediately or sending someone as soon as possible.
Do you want to make a statement on what not to say with our current agreement that means our commerce is twenty-five? Or if you can add two copiers through the agreement up to January twenty-five? Any comments? Maybe this could move forward. Yes, I'm more in favor of one head, including the under headed and moving the regular agreement to the contract that should be for January, January date. It's moving six plus, I was all.
That makes sense.
Do you need a motion?
Yes.
Make that motion. To work, to work with, uh, Cardinal. Uh, adding our couple of pieces of equipment and moving our lease maintenance agreement back up to January twenty-five. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then we have one personnel matter. Brandon DeLorenzo will be stepping down as Director of the Lasky County EMS. He wants to stay on as a full-time paramedic. Prove this, then we would need a couple of weeks to advertise and replace him, place someone into that position. So we'd need a motion to accept this resignation.
I would make a motion to accept Brandon DeLorenzo's resignation.
Any other discussion? Favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any comments, the community? John, you have something for us or not?
Morning.
Morning.
It's kind of been a long time coming, but, um, I have quotes for our roof, for our shop. There's, everybody seems to have their own opinion of what kind of roof they wanna put on it, even though I asked for specifics. The only company that came up with exactly what I asked for, Ramco. Um, and that's the company I would recommend mainly because, uh, one, they're willing to do the work. Um, two, it has a lifetime warranty on the metal where none of the other ones are offering any kind of warranty at all. Um, so it's a five-year warranty for labor and the metal start. And after the five-year period, it's lifetime on the metal and the labor for any kind of replacement for things that needed, are needed. It's also, um, sanding seam and they're gonna crimp it on-site, so there'll be no exposed fasteners. So there's really no chance of anything leaking. But I do have other quotes from other companies.
How many quotes did you receive?
Three.
Three quotes?
Yes. I have a quote from Ramco, Reed Roofing and Giant Roofing out of Logan. Place the roof, insulation and the gutters.
I think you have that in this year's budget.
I do.
And right?
Yes.
And is it under your budget that figure?
Yes, it is. It's.
What is that amount?
Uh, for Ramco's, it's thirty-eight thousand. Back to my, it's thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty-one cents. And then the gutters are two thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars and thirty-two cents. It's all under the amount that was approved for my.
Other quotes similar?
Um, the next quote is twenty-eight thousand change for a metal roof. And then the third quote is, and, and I really don't know where he came up with this, but he wants to put sheeting on the roof, like a rolled roofing kind of a thing on it. I definitely don't want. That would make sense.
Twenty-eight to the thirty-eight, that did not include labor then, putting it on?
No, it does. It's installed and.
But no warranty.
But no warranty at all. And it's, the quality of the metal from Ramco is gonna be better as far as the age of the metal, also the lifetime warranty. So. Basically, it's a one and done thing. You put the roof on it and forget about it.
This, uh, this one building?
Yes, one building.
Building to the east, right?
Correct. Top.
So is that your motion, Mike? Okay, Mike makes the motion. Have a second?
Yes, I'll second that.
Three seconds. Any other discussion?
Yes. Um.
We need to vote on this one unless it pertains.
Okay, well, I'm sorry.
Say aye.
Aye. Okay, so the sale of some of the equipment, like you guys to vote on the sale of it, so it's approved. Um, I have a gray Mack roll-off truck, a EMC truck that's rolling, it's a chassis that it doesn't run, a used barrel and cardboard truck, a cargo van trailer, and a max utility trailer, a cat forklift, a recycling trailer, it's called an alley cat, hydraulic lifts on it. Ancient and needs to leave. And also a um, semi-trailer that the floor is gone. It's not safe to operate. Ground. Those are items I'd like you guys to approve, say hello.
And how would you advertise this?
Um, I believe Gary's using a, a government option site. I was, it was recommended on the forklift to try to do locally because the Amish or the forklifts are in high demand with them, so that would get us a better price. Whatever you guys think on that. I just wanna get rid of the stuff that's way.
Can we have that list, Laura? We have that list?
Sure.
So we just need an approval to, uh, have John go ahead and advertise. Basically gonna go with Gary's website.
Yeah, I would make a motion to sell off your excess equipment by the list you have there.
Yeah, well, it's just, it just makes it look like, yeah, basically just junk's up in there. Um.
Well, I'll second that. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Okay, and then.
I got one question. Is this stuff on when we move that into the highway grounds?
Well, we probably have it on a different site.
Well, I guess my other question is, the issue we had out here with the mission, I didn't know John's bringing it to your attention, that it's something that you take out of Olson's and take out there. I don't know. That's, I'm just throwing, bringing that question up. There is another incentive off in December out there.
I think, I don't think everything needs to be moved here. When we advertise, it just needs to be the address of where it can be found. Looked at. It doesn't have to be on-site here, does it, Gary? That website?
The advertising, basically, this needs to be advertised to the public nodes. The county is selling off equipment, whether it be at Olson's or whether it be on gut deals.
But I mean, as far as we don't really wanna drag all that stuff out here and set it, so it would be at John's site.
I really don't wanna move it either, so. Okay, and then I do have one more thing, um, for a couple of price increases, um, on tires. Um, so currently tires are four dollars and semi-tires are eight dollars and then agriculture tires is basically at my discretion. But I'd like to move the car tire price from four dollars to five dollars. And I'd like to move semi-tires from eight dollars to ten dollars.
Would you be able to send it to us so we could do it?
Sure.
I, I think that'd be best.
Okay, I can do that. All right.
And we'll get that to you, uh, next meeting.
We'll table that part of it.
Yes. All right, sounds great. Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Any other community comments, anything? Yes?
I got to do this one. I had a little office this morning that I possibly a question on the panel pathway, if the county highway can use their restroom or can the county highway do it? And I said that, with the mission speaking, I will ask, I guess the reason is there's a mower on one of the local companies is having a, a mowing business that's running out. Mowing business comes and is mowing and there's a brush, brush mower on that. And I, I said, I don't know if the county highway can go mow the panel pathway. So I said, I would ask.
We would need to get back with you on that too. We need to table that until next meeting and think about that.
Yeah, so. All right.
Rudy?
I think, uh, John's stuff stands a lot better chance of getting souls out of Olson's than it does if it gets you on.
Hey.
It would get a lot more views, a lot more.
Advertisement.
Advertising, absolutely.
Okay.
I can agree with it. Because as such local people will use.
We can get back with John on that, get with Olson's.
Put them all both?
No.
Nope.
No, it gotta be one or the other.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned.